Good evening and welcome to the board meeting tonight. And just announcement, just got air. It should get better in here in a few minutes. So we just came out of closed session. And during closed session, the board chiefs voted on a motion by Rulieg, seconded by Navarro, carried by yes, one no, Board Member Cherry, to approve the tentative settlement agreement, special education matter, government code, section 4956.9, case number 08H2016040799, in the amount of $80,000. With that, will you reestablish the quorum, please?
Good evening. Board Member Jeffrey Vincent?
Present.
Board Member Fernando Navarro?
Present.
Board Vice President Walter Rulieg?
Present.
Board President Diane Gibson-Brett?
Present. And since I find a pen, we can get started. So if you all rise for the question. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty-
Thank you very much. We have approval of board minutes. I believe we were all here, correct? So is there a motion from anyone? So moved with a motion by Board Member Vincent.
Second.
Second by Board Member Rulieg. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We have the superintendent report.
Yes, so for the last couple of weeks, I've gone to a number of our schools and been really impressed with what I'm seeing in the classroom. One of the lever member was my visit to Diablo Vista and visiting a first grade classroom. And the teacher had what's called flexible seating, so the classroom was seven stations and students, some students were sitting on those round exercise balls, kind of rocky chairs, others than another station, you could stand and do your work. And you had little first graders traveling around the classroom with their iPad minis looking for the word of the day all through. It was just really cute. I highly encourage you to get out there to see that. And then I know that some of you also attended some of the homecoming events at Deer Valley High School. They did a really great job. The kids are so talented tonight, and it was just really a beautiful event. Antioch High is this week. I hope some of you will join me at that football game. They always have a great homecoming. And I want to give a shout out to the Antioch Rotary. And I know that some attended this, and I'm wearing my pin as well because I get in trouble for that. But the Antioch Rotary actually sponsored three women and girl empowerment events in which they highlighted that, and these were for eighth grade girls at all of our middle schools, they highlighted that, that really women can be anything. Don't try to put yourself in a traditional role. Think of yourself as an astronaut. Think of yourself a pilot. Because women are breaking barriers, and the more they realize that there are no barriers, the farther they'll go. So a lot, and really discussion too about as women and girls, the need to make sure that we are uplifting each other and cheering each other. The eighth grade girls, they're only 13 and they're so wise every time I talk to them. So that was a great event, and thank you to the Antioch Rotary.
And the theme was, "What would you do were not afraid to fail?" And talk about a great opportunity when you're young, that's when you want to try. If you fail, so what? You got a lot, a lot of time left. You can't be 60 and do that like I am, but this is a great, a great message for young women and boys. They're starting-
Yes, they are. So that's my report for the evening. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have student reports. Who wants to be first?
I believe we only have, oh, do we have this?
It looks like we do.
I'm short. All right. Good evening, Board of Education and members. And I'm here representing Antioch High School. So as far as student activities, we just recently had a special program last Friday honoring our high school football senior Najee Harris for winning the All-American Bowl jersey. And he was pres, he will be present at, sorry, at prestigious football game in San Antonio, Texas in January 7. Next, have homecoming week right now. And our apprentices are preparing for this. Very nervous, but they're very excited. We just did our final lunchtime activity. Secondly, we have empowerment assembly for girls sponsored by the Antioch Club. It held about 300 girls from Antioch Middle School and I believe Park Middle was in eighth grade in AMS, and you really enjoyed that. And now for student achievement at Antioch High School, our marching band just won three top awards at the Cupertino Tournament of Bands. We got first place for auxiliary percussion and military marching. So our counselors just hosted today our first shop, which was very helpful, especially for me as a senior. They had a lot of encouraging things to say and a lot of useful information. And we will be hosting a U.C. application as well as a F.A.T. and any student aid information. Also, I have cross-country team. So we are holding our Panther Tales program, which is a volunteering event. We run to the Antioch Animal Shelter and we take along like about seven dogs and we run with them. And it's really fun for our cross-country members, as well as I'm guessing for the dogs that they get a lot of exercise. Now for academies, linked learning and special programs, we just hosted our first food pantry distribution of groceries for this year. This was provided by the Leadership Academy and the Interact Club, which is community service-based, runs that program after school. We also have from the Leadership Academy, we start our careers in teaching third year, and the careers in teaching students go to internships at various elementary schools in the area and work one-on-one with children, as well as helps teachers in persons. Now, we also have our conflict mediation program to help other students feel safe, not only in school, but just at home or have anybody to talk to. They're always very helpful and they have confidentiality agreements as well. Last but not least, the Link Crew Program, which is run by Mr. Wisely. Going on our second year of supporting and mentoring freshmen, we buddied with a group of freshmen and we helped them throughout the entire year. We just held our second, I believe it was, I'm nervous, football game before. We have a little get-together and make them feel part of the Antioch High School community. So for coming events, this Friday will be our homecoming breakfast at the Lone Tree Golf Course, which all of you guys are invited to, as well as our homecoming football game, which we hope to get win. All right, that's it. Thank you.
It'll get easier by the end of the year.
Thank you.
And by the way, the running of the dogs, as I call them, I live downtown, so thank you, it's fun.
Thank you.
It's both of your first times here.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's okay. It's nervous the first time.
Good evening, Board of Education and members of the community. My name is Sally Abraham, and I'm a student of Live Oak High School representing the alternative education high schools. The students and staff of both Live Oak and Bidwell High Schools off to a great start for the school year. The schools are in process of implementing the Positive Behaviors and Action and Support Program to support students' success in and out the cla, oh, sorry, in and out of the classroom. The PBIS program has simplified the rules and expectations for the students, and they have responded, responded positively. As a result, I've seen a significant drop in disciplinary issues and an increase in focus and production in the classroom. Both schools are now in process of expanding the number of relevant rewards of students that we are doing well in class and modeling, modeling expected behaviors while on campus. Live Oak has established educational relationships with Antioch High School and Los McDonald's College. Mr. Cooper has been working very closely with Principal Louis Rocha at Antioch High School to provide Live Oak since the opportunity to enroll in career technical education and select an elective class, turn credit towards graduation. Live Oak students were also given the opportunity to enroll in the career development class that is taught at Antioch High by LMC professors. These students will be gaining valuable knowledge about Los McDonald's College and potential career choices. We look forward to continuing and nurturing these valued relationships to support our students in high school, college, and career and life. On October 10th, Live Oak will host their annual blood drive. Live Oak teacher Ms. Libby has orchestrated this event for the past five years. Students and staff participate in this annual event that can save lives. Ms. Berkish, Berkish, Science Forensics classes at Bidwell High School has visited from the criminalistic expert from the Antioch Police Department September 20th. The two officers shared their background police work and how they had gotten forensic work. They offered help with the forensic class upcoming crime scene project and want to come back with evidence that the students can hear and or touch. They were extremely knowledgeable and students enjoyed the presentation. Students look forward to another visit this spring. Having approached the end of the first quarter, both Bidwell and Live Oak are proud to announce the first graduates of the school year. Bidwell has four students and Live Oak has three students that will complete the graduation requirements to earn their diploma. These students have shown a sincere commitment and dedication to completing the Antioch Unified District graduation requirements and are looking forward to moving on to the next chapter in their lives. We wish them the best of luck in their future endeavors. Prospects High Schools and Antioch Adult School are also off the, off to a positive start. Enrollment is currently in capacity and there is wait lists on students eager to continue their education towards high school diploma. Antioch Adult School has an adult transition specialist. On-site every Wednesday, Nick Morgan is collaborating with LMC and has provided a college one-on-one workshop that is held on September 20th. There is an upcoming financial aid workshop on October 26th. Nick is helping students prepare for transition into community college and/or the workforce. Antioch adulthood has, is in the process of developing their Co-Rates and Microsoft courses. The new writing lab is up and running this year at Prospects to help students become better critical and higher order thinking. Prospects had their first school club, Interact Club. The students had, had their first event with Incor kindergarten first and second grade students. The theme was autumn fun, which included storytime, arts and crafts, dancing and snacks. Leadership has a nice kickoff to the, to the year with participating in peer and relationship building activities, learning about leadership while and focusing on what characteristics can make a great leader. The Incor homeschooling students have been very busy participating in the following clubs, Primary Share Newspaper Film, Leadership Craft and Photography Work. Incor students are also interacting with marine life, including a leper shark, eel, starfish, crabfish, et cetera. From the Marine Science Institute, many of these classes this year are driven from the theme, Under the Sea. Prospects staff and students will be recognizing breast cancer awareness, bullying prevention, and kick butt today and the next weeks to come. Lastly, Prospects will be having its quarter awards ceremony the first week of November, celebrating the academic achievements and success of all students. Thank you for your attention and have a great evening.
Thank you very much. And thank you. And as always, students, you may leave. You can go home and do homework. We have to stay. By the way, there's seats up here. There's one, two, three. They just vacated two, so if anybody's standing and wants to sit down, now's your time. Now we move into public comments. These are individuals to address the board on items not on the agenda from the public. You'll have three minutes, and the rules are up there. So did something else come this way? Is there another one?
Yes.
Is it public comment?
Staff.
Okay. So the first one is Mr. Willie Mims. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Willie Mims, representing East County Council NACP, also Pittsburgh Black Legal Association. To the board and members of the community, oh, and to Stephanie Yannella, superintendent, and to Mr. Adam Clark, congratulations on your appointment to the, as associate superintendent. This is my first time here. I hadn't kind of met him in Liberty, so I hadn't seen him since. But I wanted to say that I came because, first of all, I was, my first issue was I was looking at your budget about three and a half weeks ago, and I saw something that I thought was problematic. And that was the transferring of supplement, of $400,000 from supplemental concentration grant funds into your deferred maintenance. Now that was an illegal move. You cannot use that money for the deferred maintenance. So I raised the question and I called Mr. Navarro, but he never, I mean, I called him and he called me back, so we never could connect. And, but I got no, I'm trying to think of, why was that move made in the first place? But today, I went back and examined your budget. So I was looking for those transactions. I couldn't find the transaction for the supplement, for the, for that $400,000 that was transferred out of the supplemental concentration grant funds into the deferred maintenance. Now I found the $400,000 somewhere deep into the budget. It was, it was, it was now in the general fund, but it's not identified. So my question is, where's the $400,000 that was originally moved out of supplemental concentration grant funds and put into the deferred maintenance? That question needs to be answered. The other thing that I have is that, in your budget, you had some serious increases in classified supervisory salaries of 22%. Also, in professional consulting services and operating expenses, 22%, which is, that one alone was an increase of over $4 million. Now, when you talk about shortfalls, you need to look at where all these increases are coming from. Now, the other thing I wanted to say is that I got a series of complaints, one about the police investigating and also interrogating our children. Now I want you to remind this board that you faced a lawsuit some time ago because of that very issue. So I think that you need to understand that you have to be careful about allowing police to interrogate our children unless committed some kind of crime. And if they're going to interrogate them, then you're operating under penal code and it should be read their rights. And so if they're not read their rights, then they're violating the law. The other thing, what, that time, block scheduling? I'm not sure how much has been, because if you look at your, your assessment scores, I'm, the block scheduling has been a block, I think you need to revisit it. Thank you.
Okay. If you would speak to Mr. Leonard at another occasion, he's our new Tim Forrester, and he can answer your accounting questions.
I hope he can.
Okay. Number two is Clarissa Wilson.
Good evening, school board and citizens of the community. I am Clarissa Wilson, and I am coming on behalf of Antioch High School's volleyball team. I will be announcing that next Thursday will be our Big Pink Game. For freshmen, I believe the time is four o'clock. For JV, it is 5:30. And for varsity, I believe it's 6:30, 7 o'clock. Please come out and support. Go Panthers.
Okay, the third one, I have to say I cannot read it. So whoever just handed in something?
I did. Yes, ma'am. Jeff Bell?
I'm speaking as a private citizen, Contras County Board, but private citizen. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, superintendent and staff. Mr. Clark, good to see you again. A famous general was once asked, "What's the difference between appeasement and surrender?" The difference between, ladies and gentlemen, I contend, between appeasement and surrender is time. It's time. The fact of the matter is, if you were to go back and ask Instagram, or perhaps Kodak in this case, you know, what did they miss in 2009, 2010? Kodak, a company, 260,000 employees, Instagram, 13 guys out of the basement in Palo Alto, okay, saw what was coming. They recognized the time. Fast forward two years, 2011, Kodak filed bankruptcy. And Instagram, okay, sold their company to Google, a billion dollars.
So would you mind speaking to the-
The fact of the ma, yes, ma'am, sorry. The fact of the matter is, it's time. It is time now that we step to the plate. Not activities, but we start getting outcomes as it relates to student pupils. We start getting outcomes. Outcomes, ladies and gentlemen. It's so much, activity's been going on for so long, you know, financially, I think the county and the state, I mean, we're spending more money than we spent over the last five years in terms of, in terms of education. What, about $84 billion, all of a sudden of the nature, $171 billion budget. So we need to get outcomes. The outcomes are not there. The outcomes do not meet, do not meet their estimate. So I ask you again, the difference between appeasement and surrender is time. So I contend that the city's, Antioch's economic stability and security is directly predicated upon the success of our educational system. You show me a city that is in decline, I'll show you a city whose economics, whose education system is failing. So again, the writing's on the wall. It's just a matter of time. Because before you blink, tomorrow becomes today. So please, take this warning and let's all step up to the plate and do a better job than what we're doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Velma Wilson.
Today's a new day, Antioch. So at first I wasn't going to speak, but I think I need to. I just want to applaud the efforts of Antioch Unified School District. 2016, 2017 has been so far a phenomenal school year. So the activities that we are doing in the Antioch School District right now, one of which that I'm very proud of, because I'm the parent and the community person that's actually doing it, every Friday, every Thursday, some on Mondays, but I'm standing out there greeting families and watching our school sites increase in parent involvement. You know, that's a part of our LCAP. It's part of it. It's a huge piece of the LCAP. I'm watching families come to me crying in the morning, seeing their kids haven't have, after having a rough morning, walking in and don't even want to speak, but I'm smiling at them. Today's a new day, Antioch. So I'm so tired of all the negative. I'm so sick of hearing people that are not at our school seeing the wonderful things that are going on, on these campuses. I'm tired of it. And it's time for you to be a part, truly a part of the solution and start being a part, start being a part of the problem, but being a part of the solution and get out there and be involved. Come, I invite you. I invite you to come with me in the mornings and see all the kids smiling faces. PBIS is in full effect. Positive behaviors are going forth. And I really want to thank the school board, the school district staff that are coming out. Adam Clark, you have been a champion. You have truly, truly, truly been a champion. I've watched teachers smile to see and to get a chance to meet you. Stephanie, you were out there, little Starbucks burrito serving families, and they just loved it because they felt so much love from our district staff, and they felt like they actually, we actually cared. And that's what we want to see. That's what I really want to like to see go viral. Not with all this negative riffraff that don't mean nothing to me at this point, because if you can't be at our schools and graduating these students for their hard work they're doing on a day in, a day out, and champion for our teachers and our staff, then please, go sit, go, go sit somewhere. Go sit in that back row somewhere. Because I'm all about let's promote and continually promote the positive.
Thank you. Now, that was the end of public comments, unless somebody else has a card. Okay, with that, we'll move to staff comments. Mr. Ken Kent.
Hello. Thank you all. Ken Kent, fifth grade teacher at Kimball Elementary. Good to see you all again. Wanted first to thank the board for their vote last week in support of Prop 55, the resolution that extends the income tax portion of Prop 30. In the last three years, Prop 30 has given us over $67 million, which has allowed us to bring back computer teachers and music instrumental programs and reading intervention specialists, to really start making supports through our schools after a time when we had some really draconian heavy measures established. And you see it right off the bat in elementary schools. However, I was disappointed to hear that interim member Fernando Navarro voted against a resolution for Prop 55. You sort of have put your own ideology ahead of your duty to care for the education of Antioch students. You voted to deny millions of education dollars to Antioch families and students. You've broken your oath. You voted against computer programs. You voted against reading and math interventions. You voted against healthy instrument programs and tutoring programs. You threw your hands in the air and told the most struggling students and families in Antioch that we'll just have to find another way. Shame on you. For your alternately callous and cavalier attitude towards education, Antioch students and families deserve a caring, intelligent board member of vision, and you are not that board member. You are not the board member that Antioch students and families deserve. My apologies to the rest of the board. This is unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Sagehorn, I figured you were lining up. Thank you.
My, my mother ever saw me sitting and a female or pregnant woman was up, she would come down and slay me right here and there. My name's Michael Sagehorn. I teach history at Deer Valley High School, and I'm involved as a teacher in the Performing Arts Academy. And I just want to give an explanation, an apology to Ms. Bellici. I'm the one that brought all these children to the boardroom today, and I want to let you know why. Because the Performing Arts Academy is participating in a connected project called Artists as Activists. And in the project, my history students are participating in government as participants and observers and essentially being reminded of their civic duty, not just in their senior class in government, but in my US history class. And so the students that you see out here will probably do a beeline because they have something to read from my class here in the next 20 minutes. But we're really serious in the Performing Arts Academy about integrated instruction, about incorporating history, English, dance, science, and math. And I want to make sure that we have a really good thing running with these academy programs. If you look at all of the highlights and, you know, put the medal on the kid, a good share of them are coming from these work-based learning academies. And there's a, there's a rumor going around that that's going to cease and that instead we're going to go to more of a focus on subject matter and subject matter assessments and less time on some of these great integrated projects and learning that takes place outside of the classroom. My students are, are proud. I could sense them, they were watching the interaction between all of you, and this is experiential learning, to learn how government works. And I want to thank you for allowing them to come in.
Could you stand, have them stand up so we can see who they are?
Okay.
Quite a few of them. Welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson.
Okay, so that was the employees. District reports, we have none. Public presentations, none. Hearing, nuns. We have the consent calendar. We do have one speaker, so I'm going to go ahead and speak, and then we'll poll and discuss items. Willie Mims, item 15, 11A. The one you asked to speak on ratified vendor agreement, restorative justice. Just the one you asked to speak on ratified vendor agreement, restorative justice.
Was there a, a presentation done on that, restorative justice?
Not here, no.
Is there a staff report that I could hear before I, before I say anything? Because I don't know.
You go to 46 to 52, did you read it?
No, I'm asking you, has there been a, a staff report on that item?
No.
So, this is the first time it's coming?
It's a ratification of a contract, yes. We don't have staff reports on all contracts, no.
So, okay. When are you proposing the outcome to be with this restorative justice at this particular site?
Who wants to take this?
I'll take it.
Thank you, Adam.
So.
Mr. Clark.
In particular, this, this particular goal is part of our LCAP in, in building inclusive and safe communities. We're all students and families and members of the community feel welcome and valued. And specifically, we're looking to lower our suspension rate by all students by 10% and specifically, lower the suspension rate of our African-American students by 20% by the end of the 16, 17 school year. So overall, that is, that is the goal of this, of this particular restorative justice training that the school, staff, and students will be going through.
So it's, it's going to be a total involvement with the restorative justice? That's what, that's what I need to know?
Yes, so.
I'll, go ahead, sorry.
Oh, it's, it's, we're conducting an onsite workshop where staff will be trained for three full days, and then there'll be six additional days where classroom monitoring and support will take place, and then also, students will be trained during that time.
The, one of my concerns, and I've mentioned this to Mr. Dr. Clark when he was at Liberty and in Pittsburgh too, and probably here too, with the restorative justice, my concern is who is justice being restorative on? And I think that the restorative justice itself, the, the training, should be more focused in on the very people who are meeting our justice. Because if they don't know how, if they don't have a clear understanding of what restorative justice is, then folks will be thrown out of the class. People get thrown out, suspended from school, expelled from school. So, I hope that when you, when you implement this, that you have a clear understanding of what restorative justice should be. And, and that means that you try alternative means to either kicking somebody out of the classroom or kicking somebody out of the school. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody, okay, now for the board.
Board member?
Yes, please.
Gibson. Staff would like to remove consent item 1E.
And also, we have updated reports from Human Resources, A&amp;B. Anything the board would like to poll or discuss on the consent calendar? Any hearing, none?
So you're pulling, you're pulling E? And then, isn't F also? Is that a different contractor? Is that just inspection?
That's just for inspection.
Okay.
And then 3A and B are revised. So, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar with item 1E removed and 3A and B revised?
So moved.
We have a motion by Ms. Vincent?
I second it.
Second by Mr. Terry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. We have action item number one. Diane Auburn, California School Employees Association chapter. She was the CSEEA nominee to the Personnel Commission for how many times? Third, this her third? Okay, does any, anybody have any questions or concerns, or would you like to vote on it? She's been a good member. Is there a motion?
I'd like a motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Rui.
I second it.
Second by Mr. Terry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulate Ms. Auburn. Next, we have approval of the piggyback bid with County Office of Merced to perform services with fast, fast open contract utilization services focused for the upgrading of the district voice. I say voice over IP, and that's probably not right. Phone system.
That's it, that's, you're exactly right.
Okay, so who's going to do the report?
I'll, I'll handle it. So, two weeks ago, staff shared with you that the current phone system, when it was converted from analog to voice over IP, literally, nothing has been done to it for five years. And so, we are at the point where the system, if we don't upgrade it now, it will fail, which means our phones will fail, the clocks and speakers at the schools will fail. So, we shared with you that we've been, we would be bringing forward a piggyback bid. And this is actually through the county of Merced. Through a, through a performance services. It's called, what they call focus. So that's what they call their bid. And this bid is, goes through the bidder, the lowest responsive and responsible bidder is ATM. And so, as, as I shared with you in the write-up under public contract code, this is the most efficient way, and it's a good bid to get in and get this project done. Staff, and staff is recommending that the governing board approve the piggyback bid with the county of Merced along with the AMSnet.net for upgrading the voice over IP. The timeline for replacing the phone system, Joe, could you share that?
We're looking at potential install dates of November and December. We're trying to make a very thoughtful upgrade, make sure it is successful, considering the importance of the system. On, hopefully on your approval, we'll begin talks to finalize that installation.
And then at some point, will you be coming back to us? Because obviously, we haven't done anything for five years. Hopefully, we won't plan to wait another five years. Maybe have a maintenance program in place.
We've included a maintenance contract in this.
Perfect.
And there is kind of a shift of work that's going on. So in the old phone system with the analog, it made a lot of sense for the maintenance workers, electricians, and those folks over there to do the work. When we went to voice over IP, it now really becomes a network issue. So we're working with the maintenance department to move a lot of the maintenance responsibilities and the upgrade responsibilities to where it belongs, is in, in our technology department.
Is the hardware on campus or on district? Or are we going off of, off of cloud? And we're just having, and equipped?
The environment currently resides in our Network Operations Center, and it'll stay there mostly for security and privacy reasons.
Good.
Any other questions?
Yes, will there be sufficient training for any of the faults that will occur from an install like this? Will have people on hand to assist staff and to?
There's training being provided for the administrators of the system. The end-users will see minimal impact as far as how the phone operates. When the install is occurring, we will have our network and system staff on, on duty to provide, render any assistance to the school sites. This will be happening over the weekend, so we'll see minimal impact to the school sites.
And what's the anticipated life cycle that we, that this board can expect with the new phone system?
I would say anywhere between five and seven years. But we have put maintenance contracts in so that we're adequately maintaining it and keeping the licensing up to date to minimize costs in the future.
Another question. Are we going to be utilizing video conferencing?
Our current system does actually have a video component involved. Some users are naturally adverse to that. It is a new medium to communicate with. The system can support video conferencing as well as chat and other items, and we can turn those on at the demand of the district and the need of the district.
And the only other concern I have is, we, you know, we know that we have a problem with our servers, so we're going to have the capacity at this point to maintain this system, this new system.
That's correct. The service that will be operating will be replacing the current service, so there's no impact to our resources.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with that, is there a motion to approve? Motion by Mr. Fernando, second by Mr. Terry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Okay, receive Rocketship Charter School petition for review?
Yes, so, um, let me see here. So, on September 30th, Rocketship presented, Rocketship Education presented a charter school petition, Stephanie Anello, for consideration of this district to create a K5 charter school. I believe it's called, right now, what they're calling it is Antioch Rocketship Charter School. What we're doing tonight is presenting, having the board receive the petition. So that starts a 60-day, a 30-day, and a 60-day timeline. The 30-day timeline is when you're supposed to have a public hearing regarding, to get public input, obviously. And the 60-day timeline is to make a decision on whether to approve or deny the charter. So tonight, we're just asking the board to accept this charter. It will start the timeline. Now, the timeline is, it's a little difficult because of holidays, because of the board election, and, and if we're, if the current board is accepting this or receiving the charter and is going to be holding a public hearing on the charter, it seems only right that this current board should also approve or deny the charter. So we're looking at a calendar that's going to require two additional board meetings. Staff is proposing the first date of November 2nd as the public hearing, and the second date of November 29th as, as the board to take action of whether to approve or deny the charter.
Did you say 29th?
November 29th, correct.
Tuesday?
Yes, Tuesday.
You said there was a 60-day clock.
Yes.
You're just condensing it and going?
We're trying to, right. Because it's, we're squeezing it down to avoid the, so technically, as I understand it from Nancy, I learned something from Nancy, is if there's, when there's the board election and if there's new members up there, the existing board members' final official date would be December 2nd. So that's why. Right, so that's why we're backing it up to November 29th. The 30th became a non-option because that is the beginning of the CSBA conference, annual conference.
It's the 29th?
Yeah.
But the 29th would have to be an early meeting because as I explained, some of the board will be attending a pre-conference workshop that begins the 30th, so they will have to be traveling late for 29th to attend. I know at least one has indicated that.
Okay.
Then why couldn't we do Monday, the 28th?
Yeah, I think we can finalize the date tonight, it's really just acceptance of.
Well, we want to, we want to try to get the date as final as we can because I've got to get back to the petitioner on what the dates are and where the hearings are going to be. Staff is proposing that the hearing be held at Deer Valley High School because of their, the size and capacity and all that stuff. So, that's our proposal. We're asking for you to accept, or to receive the report and look at dates. Probably when you get to your calendar, see if those dates work for you later.
So you're proposing November 2nd?
November 2nd for the public hearing. And now, it looks like November 28th for the action item to vote whether or not to accept or deny the petition.
Do we determine?
So we're looking at scratch 29th, now we're looking at the 28th?
That's correct. And we can, when we get, when you get to that agenda on your, on your list tonight, when you get to your calendar, we can finalize those dates.
Okay, thank you.
We have three speakers. First one, Sarah Savacul, followed by Ken Kent. So you're on deck next, Ken? And then followed by Marie Gill.
Good evening, members of the board, community. My name is Sarah Savacul, French teacher at Antioch High School. I'm here tonight to remind the board that charter schools are a complicated issue. I've been to numerous conferences about them because there's a lot of law. There's a lot of, there's just a lot to know when you think about charter schools. It's not a simple thing, like, oh, charter schools coming to our community. We should let them in. There are different types of charter schools. There are different reasons for charter schools. There are different things that charter schools offer our students. You need to really do your homework between now and the hearing about what Rocketship is, what they represent, who they represent, and what they're bringing to the students of Antioch. In a nutshell, corporate interest, profit, and a really stripped-down education for our kids. I'm really sad that now I have to wear my yellow shirt again because we already fought them in Mount Diablo, where they were shut out 5-0 on that board. And we fought them at the county level, where the county also decided they were not a good fit for our students in our county. So I'm really, I'm disappointed that they're coming to our community to bring their brand of second-rate education to our students. And I beg you to do your homework between now and then, and do what's best for the students of Antioch. Thank you.
Mr. Kent?
Hello, thank you again. Big issue. Now, I do want to let you know that charters give a gut reaction to a lot of people. There are definitely various kinds of charters. Antioch itself has some wonderful grassroots community charters, like the Antioch Charter Academy, that has a Montessori influence, a multiple intelligence base, a research-supported school. Last key term, a research-supported school with some wonderful results. There are, however, corporate charters that come in, have a cost analysis model. The Board of Directors for Rocketship includes one person with a credential in high school math, but zero teaching experience. It includes investment bankers, financial analysts, marketing executives, retail and restaurant executives, for-profit education product executives. So they want to sell us something. They want to sell us a model of a K5 school with a significant portion of its day behind a screen. Since when do our kindergartners and first graders and second graders need more time behind a screen? I've talked with people who've worked at Rocketship. I've talked to parents who've been cajoled in signing positions in the Mount Diablo School District. There was a parent who told me through an interpreter that someone said their school was closing, and in order to save their child's place on that school, they had to sign this paper. And when they did, they got a gift card to Target. This is not a moral thing to do. We want to bring someone in here. We want someone with upstanding character, both in their practices and as a model for our students. Now, Rocketship has had some numbers where they show increased API scores, but they haven't held true. Now, is that test score so important to students? No. A test score is one single measure among a variety of performance-based measures that show how a student is performing. But what it does is it lets them have a point to say, hey, we've had a successful school. Let's get another, and another, and another. And that's the model they've been pushing. Their API scores are good for their bottom line. They are not good for Antioch students and families. Now, you will, as this comes through, you will undoubtedly hear from parents from Rocketship who had a wonderful experience so far. I'm glad for those families. I'm glad they found something that's working for them. But when we look at serving all students and we look at how much we would have to be giving up for this, you'll find that the high-pressure, no-enrichment model is not good for students in Antioch. And I beg you to take your time. I would also please think about the rush to get this in under this time. Whereas the 60-day model pushes it past the election, why are we pressing this so fast now?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Marie Gill. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you for having me. Good evening, my name is Marie Gill, and I am a Rocketship Education employee. I'm the Bay Area Regional Director and coming back to Antioch after 20 years. A community that holds a very... a community that holds a very important place in my heart. I would say I am a model to students and I have an upstanding character. But 20 years ago, I was a low-income, single mom with a biracial child going to preschool here in Antioch. I lived on a boat because that's all I could afford. And I was encouraged to go back to school, so I attended Los Madonnas College here and got my first full-time job working for the Rape Crisis Center of Antioch. So, 20 years later, I'm here as a representative of Rocketship and over 66,000 parents from the Bay Area that have had their children in our schools and want to introduce myself to you as a representative of Rocketship and also invite you to come and see our schools for yourself. We are happy to host you, to answer any questions, but we do want you to be informed as board members. We also received the letter from Mr. Lernid. Thank you so much for that. The dates that we had on the letter were different than those that were proposed today. So, I would just ask this board to take action to stay within those 60-day limits that the law provides. What I heard was the 2nd of November and the 28th of November. And in the letter, we had delineated November 9th and November 29th. So, I just want clarity that we are moving those dates. And I'm available for any questions that you have today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Williams? Willie Williams?
First of all, I, in turn, staff said that they presented you with a copy of the petition. Is that true? Do you have a copy of the petition coming to the board?
No, we don't.
If you have one, I have to have one myself. The question about, about the charter school, I'm not going to draw a beat Rocketship. I and Rocketship have crossed paths over the last five years numerous times. So, we know each other. My, one thing is, is there a need? Whenever there is a, when charter schools roll into the scene, you have to ask yourself, is there a need? They wouldn't be here if there was some kind of a need within the Antioch Unified School District. You have some serious issues here with your, with your Lancher's Assessment Scores. They're atrocious. And when you have something like that, you'll find these charter schools like Rocketship circling around, circling around, and now they're here. They have been watching you for years. Their point man has come to this board numerous times over the years. He's not, he's not here anymore. But he's been here numerous times in the back, watching you guys and listening and studying. So, now Rocketship is here. In a way, you don't have to blame yourself for Rocketship being here. Now, I am not, no, my organization have to oppose it, but I'm letting you know that there are some serious issues here within this school district. And if you don't address them like you're supposed to, then you're going to have more Rocketships. The problem that you, that you are confronted with is that if you deny the charter and you take it to the county board, and I will be there standing with you, and the county board deny it, they're going to take it to the state. The state's going to help them approve the charter. They're going to show them. They're, they're going to point out all the problems that they, that they had with denial. And they are going to sit down with them so that they can get their charter in. It is a problem that you face. And I'm not sure how you're going to stop it. Me, I just want to let you know, once they move, you can't stop them. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we have discussion by the board. Any comments, questions?
So, you know, having, having a charter school problem isn't new to this district because we have to fight for Dozier-Libby. And so, you know, my concern is, of course, I'm going to review and research the petition and see what's there. But we do have, and we all know that, I know I'm preaching to the choir because staff is here. We do have a mandate to improve academic outcomes for all students. We know that. And so, going forward, we looked at goals today and how we're going to move forward and how we're going to improve that. Is our charter schools the, the option? They're an option, or they's a solution? That has yet to be determined. Different charter schools perform academically across many different realms for many different reasons. So, I would encourage the community to just stay involved. We're going to take a look at it. I'm going to research and see what the options are. And of course, I will do what is within the best interest of this district.
Any other comments?
Yes. I had heard from the young lady from Rocketship. She said two different dates in a year, Chris. I'm confused about that.
Okay, so, the letter that I sent to Rocketship said tentative. I don't think that said, these are the dates. I believe it said something to the effect, I need to take it to the board and finalize the dates. So, tonight, I'm hearing that, actually, at cabinet today, we talked about the 9th and how that didn't work, so we backed it up to the 2nd. And then, tonight, Nancy explained why the 29th wouldn't work, so we're backing up to the 28th. So, that's what's...
And here's the problem, if you go, my understanding, the clock starts today? Or did it start September 30th?
Today. As soon as you, as soon as the board receives the...
Okay, so it starts today. So, we have until the 12th. However, in December...
Right.
However, the challenge is, our first meeting with the board is not until the 14th. And we have a window between the 2nd and the 14th when three board members could effectively be not having hours.
That's correct.
Okay, that's the reason for...
That's why we're doing it the way we're doing it.
Anybody have any questions or concerns about that rationale there?
No.
My understanding, doesn't the law dictate it's when they submit the petition, on the 30th?
I talked to legal counsel, and legal counsel said when the board receives it. And tonight, you're receiving it. So, the 30-day tick starts tonight.
We have to move to receive it.
Right.
Well, when do we actually physically receive it?
You will get, I will, well, it's here if you want to read it. But what I'll do is, tomorrow, we will send the board through email a copy of the petition. It's really not the whole binder. A lot of this is backup material. So, it's about maybe, I don't know, maybe about 80 pages thick. And it'll, you'll receive it in digital format.
So, you said you're going to send it tomorrow?
Yes.
So, does the clock start tomorrow or today?
It starts today because you're receiving it.
Once we take action, we'll receive it.
Right.
Another question. The young lady had asked us to make sure we research and do our homework. You had invited us to one of your locations?
Permission to approach? Yeah, so, we would like to extend a tour to staff and board members to come and visit our schools in San Jose. And we would be formidable to any date that's convenient to you and transportation or whatever costs that are not at the district's level. We would also extend that invitation.
And the invitation can come through the Secretary of the Board. Nancy will lead you.
Thank you. One more, one more piece. I would just like to cite the ed code for the board's understanding. Ed Code 47605B says, "No later than 30 days after receiving a petition, in accordance with subdivision A, the governing board of the school district shall hold a public hearing on the provisions of the charter, at which time the governing board of the district, school district shall consider the level of support for the petition by our teachers employed by the school district." So, I just implore you to have that in mind.
We do have staff that will advise us. Thank you.
Very good. Do you have legal counsel present?
Yes. Well, no, we won't.
Not present.
We won't go through our staff.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, we can make it available online.
So, get back to the dates which started this. So, are we looking at the 28th?
Yes, we're looking at November 2nd for the, for the public hearing, the 28th for the action item to whether to accept or reject the petition.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Question you and then comment for you.
Go ahead, another one.
Well, I think this is, I echo what Mr. Williams says. It's elementary physics, you know? Nature abhors a vacuum, and unfortunately, we've provided a vacuum. And if we, if we're true to our charter to give the best education we can to our kids, we have to consider that also. And, okay, we might not get it on the district level. We might not get it on the county level, but they will get it at the state level. And I'd rather work with them than work against them and maybe learn a thing or two.
Thank you.
Well, I'm not going to ask for sympathy because that's why we get paid the big bucks. But it's going to be an interesting month. I can tell you that. Probably the three toughest jobs of a trustee. One would be hiring a new superintendent. Another would be closing a school. And the third is acting on a petition like this. A lot of thought, a lot of heartfelt thought goes into it.
Okay, with that, do we have a motion to receive the petition?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Terry. Second by Mr. Fernando. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Petition's been received. Motion carries 5-0. Next, we go on items for discussion by the board. Board Policy 9200, Limits of the Board Member Authority. Mr. Navarro, you asked to bring it back. Do you have your suggestions ready?
I do. If we could pass this out.
Okay, if you're going to pass out something, did you bring enough for the audience?
No. It's, it's just a reference. Or if you guys don't want to...
Yeah, I don't suggest you do that because it needs to be part of...
Well, Stephanie can.
We can put it up on the screen.
Okay, just do it on the screen. It is? The 9200 is. But he has a whole handout that's not available to the public. So...
It's a recommended revision.
Okay, you could just go over them? Okay, let him get to 9200.
Page 87. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know you...
Right, use passage. 89, so it should be...
I believe it's before the resolutions.
It is. Okay, now, just go over line by line, I guess.
Okay, well, the revision that I kind of researched and suggested would, would, instead of it being just a limitation on the board, I wanted to get a preface because I know we consolidated different policies into one page. And, well, I'll just read the introduction that I had typed up here. Bear with me. "As a designated legal agency responsible for public education in the district, the Board of Education derives its authority from the state. In reality, the board has only, those powers conferred to it by statute. Those powers are extended and appeared throughout the section of the California Revised Code and Constitution." This is what I highlighted. "At no time may the Board of Education, by its own action, relinquish its power of authority." My concern with BP9200, it's, I think it's very restrictive. And I basically added before that the delegated powers that the board has, and then I went to the limitations. My change I have that I would recommend for the limitations is just basically two, which is, item two. Now, it says on there, "Unless agreed to by the board as a whole, individual members of the board shall not exercise any administrative responsibility with respect to the schools or the command of the services of any school employee." What I suggested was... Oh, that's the last one. It's right here, sorry. I said, I, the addition I would recommend was that, "However, individual board members shall exercise their oversight responsibilities empowered by the voters to interact and inquire with respect to the schools, school employees, and parents, and community members. Individual board members shall submit and receive clarifications requesting information to and from the superintendent. Board members shall refer board-related correspondence to the superintendent for forwarding to the board placement of the board's agenda as appropriate." So, I just wanted to make sure that, even though we don't interact and we don't micromanage, my concern is that we're not allowing us to be a listening entity, to listen to the different concerns, and we're being segregated from any concerns that we might have at the district level, the site-school level, the parent level. And the other change that I recommended was eliminating in its entirety, item four.
Actually, I made some changes to item four. You're recommending eliminating?
Yeah, I think as, even, even though you're a board, you're a board member, you're still a parent.
Can you raise that up so that I can see it?
And you do have constitutional and First Amendment rights. Obviously, within the context of, you can't micromanage as a board member.
Oh, okay, I was looking, I made changes to four, but I see, on mine, I moved that to number five.
Yes, a different, different line, yeah.
So, basically, for that, may I?
Yes.
What you stated in number four is that, because you're a parent of the school district, you want to be able to go to the school without prior permission?
Exactly. I mean, I'm already bound by my oath to not interact with above and beyond, but I still retain the right as a parent for, in my First Amendment rights.
So, okay, so, when I, when I look at that, I don't think a board member by law loses any parental rights for a child that they have in a public school system. I think they retain all of those parental rights. I think when, when looking at this, I moved it to number, it's number four, but I, on mine, I made some changes and moved it to number five and just basically put, "A board trustee whose child is attending a district school recognizes his or her role as a board trustee when interacting with the district employee. A board member," I put, "should or must inform the superintendent or designate before volunteering in his or her child's classroom." And I think the intent was that if you are, as a board member, going to volunteer, there's a fine line in volunteering and interacting with the staff in terms of what your duties would be. So, I simply just took away some of that extraneous piece and just put that in. But I, but according to law, you still, you would be okay. Your, your rights are still in place as a parent. I don't know if that makes any sense.
Yeah, so, my, my overall concern with BP92, and it's a very new board policy, and this is like not even four months old, five months old, is that it restricts our ability as trustees ability as trustees vested, vested by the voters to be that conduit, that voice. And it goes both ways, from the voter to the bench, to the dais, and also from everybody, every employee, every district member, if they have any concern, they should be able to, we should be able to listen to them and have that voice here, instead of just being restricted to, well, you know, we'll, we'll get the reports and we'll take the word for it, and then we'll vote accordingly.
Can you share with me where and to it says you cannot listen or communicate or do anything that you just said? The only thing that I'm seeing, unless I'm-
I think we're going back to two, right?
I want you, I want you. It says you're not, you can't exercise any administrative responsibility with respect to the schools or command the services of any school employee. That is not our role. It does not say that we cannot talk to our constituents, teachers. I mean, I have conversations on a regular basis with employees and parents and whoever else catches me, and I try not to go to the grocery store. But I don't see where this limits any conversation.
Well, I, I question the, why all of a sudden this new board policy, and I like to have the language in there.
I can answer that. Every other district, as I shared before, has this board policy. It's governed by ed code and state, and what, what authority the board has. We were missing this policy, and it's my job as a superintendent to constantly make sure that we have the recommended policies that are in accordance with the law, and this policy is.
So I actually made some changes and wanted to briefly go through mine, and just want to be quick, because I know trustee Navarro was looking at it, so I just thought I'd also take a look. And so for number one, I, I basically went through, as Ms. Nello said, and looked at ed code. So I have, "The governing board is the unit of authority over the district and has broad but limited powers. Board trustees shall hold the education of students above any partisan principle, group, interests, or personal interests. The governing board may initiate and carry on any program or activity that is not in conflict or inconsistent with state law or violate the purpose for which school districts are established, such as clear performance standards in support of academic excellence, flexibility in the methods used to achieve the standards, incentives for achieving the standards, as well as consequences for failing to do so, and accountability for outcomes for all students." So I changed that for item number one, that's highlighted. For number two, I have, "Unless agreed to by the board as a whole, individual trustees of the board shall not exercise any administrative responsibility with respect to the schools or command the services of any school employee. Requests for information from individual board trustees shall be sent to the superintendent." For number three, I have, "Board trustees shall refer board-related correspondence to the superintendent for placement on the board agenda or for forwarding to other trustees as appropriate. Individually, a trustee cannot commit the district to any policy or expenditure without the full approval of all trustees." Number four, "Individual trustees do not have the single authority to resolve complaints, but may listen to community members and parents and refer the complainant to the superintendent or designate so that the problem may be reviewed, given proper consideration, and handled through the appropriate district process." Number five, "A board trustee whose child is attending a district school recognizes his or her role as a board trustee when interacting with the district employee. A board member should or must inform the superintendent or designate before volunteering in his or her classroom." Number six, "The superintendent or designate shall provide a copy of the state's open meeting laws, parentheses, Brown Act, to each board trustee and to anyone who is elected to the board but has not yet assumed office." So really, I was trying to address some of Fernando's concern as it relates to board authority and whether or not board authority would be limited, but also just trying to cover, you know, what some of his concerns were, because it didn't seem like the policy was clear enough. And I think that's where some of the issues are, is that the policy is generic in some of its format. So that's my two cents.
Governor.
Yes, sir.
Okay, you switched four to five. And could you read that one more time? What, what did you change?
Which one?
Under yours, you said number five, but it was number four. That's on the screen.
The child of a board member.
I just simplified it to say, "A board trustee whose child is attending a district school recognizes his or her role as a board trustee when interacting with a district employee. A board member should, parentheses, must inform the superintendent or designate before volunteering in his or her child's classroom." And I did a little bit of research on board policies for quite a few districts, all over the California, but also in some other states, and some of them are very clear and succinct, and some of those board policies are spelled out. So I actually adapted, I took the ed code, which I have copies of ed code, and just tried to blend it in so that it, when we have this policy, it doesn't look like we're limiting board authority, but we're still within the law of ed code. And there's also some other laws that were passed, assembly bills also. This, this would cover some of the assembly bills.
So just to be succinct, the, the purpose of me pulling this is to make sure that not only this board, but any future board does not feel that their, their hands are tied or they're, they're sequestered in, in having that, that venue of communication. So I wanted to have that language in there.
Okay, and from the get-go, you can talk to anybody you want. So please let that be your, your mantra. Don't feel compelled to not be able to talk because of this. But in the meantime, I don't think the board is prepared to write this. I suggest that you both send your recommendations to the superintendent. There's things that you're stating, saying that will not or may not fall into the legal references, so we cannot do it from here. Please send them to her, we'll bring it back. Probably not on the next agenda, probably a future one, because it's going to be a lot more work, so.
Yep.
Is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
And I appreciate all your work and input. I mean, it's the jo, it is the job of the Board of Education to, to-
Write policy.
Develop policy, so thank you.
I will. I'll copy that.
It's on our website as well.
I got a bunch of things that you got, Greg.
Well, 9200 is up there. We don't have the rest of them either.
I can get your copy.
Okay, these are my personal changes. I'm happy to get your copy.
That's fine. Next-
Stephanie, of course, will be the first to get it.
So next we'll go to resolutions. We have none for first reading. We have resolutions for meeting in action. We have three. Do you guys want to take them as a whole or separately?
These are not consent items, they should be done separately.
Thank you, but I'm offering them the, do you guys like to take them separately or together?
Which items are we looking at?
Resolution. Let's just take them separately, that's my-
Okay, resolution 2016, sufficiency of textbooks and instructional materials. Any questions?
Is this replaced in a previous, is this an update to a resolution already in place?
We're required to adopt the resolution annually. It's a standard resolution.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
There's a motion by Ms. Vincent.
Second.
Second by Mr. Navarro. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Two B, resolution for acceptance and notice of exemption from minor additions to Orchard Park Middle School. Is there a motion?
There are motion.
We have a motion by Mr. Terry, second by-
Second.
Mr. Navarro. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Resolution authorizing provisional intern permit. Questions or a motion, please?
Again, a standard resolution that we bring forward before the board.
We have the motion by Mr. Terry. Is there a second?
Second.
Hi, Ms. Vincent. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Resolutions for second reading and action, none. Board policies for first reading, none. Board policies for second reading and action, none. Information anticipation of future action, none. Information items for general information, none. Future agenda items from board members. We will revisit 9200 again. And anything else?
Yes, to segue off, conversation was had earlier this evening on televised meetings. I think it was last year the subject came up. At that time, I deferred my conclusion on the matter. I threw agreement with some other board members. We felt that time wasn't appropriate with transitioning of new superintendents and so on and so forth. At this point, I would like to bring it up for some sort of consensus from the group. And if that consensus is reached, which is a hypothetical, I have no way of knowing whether it would be, but if a consensus was, is reached, I would be hoping that we would ask staff to get back to us with some research on options, what live streaming would cost, what delayed broadcast would cost, what an audio version would cost, so that we can, if we were so interested, could choose a model that was reasonable.
Okay, anybody else?
So I'm, I'm fine with that. I know someone mentioned that we could also piggyback off the city council and have a couple of meetings over there occasionally and use their, you know, their webcast and live recording, so that's a thought. But I'm really hopeful that once our technology is up, we'll be able to do our own thing, own channel, et cetera.
And then I asked about recordings online. How are you doing with that? Audio online?
It's on.
Audio is now online for board meetings.
Yes.
Okay, individuals to address the board regarding items not on the agenda. We don't, we finished that. Reports from board members relatives to memberships, other organizations, or district businesses. I'll start to my right.
I have nothing.
Nothing specific.
So is tonight's meeting online or will it go up later?
It'll go up later.
Okay, just checking. Thank you.
Last week's is up, right? We'll be, yeah. When I found out how easy it was to get it and listen to it, it was pretty cool. Okay, future meetings. We're getting a Board of, Board of Education meetings, October 26th, November 16th, and it looks like tentatively November 2nd and 11, November 28th.
Correct.
And location will be?
Deer Valley High School.
Deer Valley.
Deer Valley High School.
Have you done a use permit?
Theater.
They could have something there. I don't have-
We'll verify.
Yeah, so to be determined, just in case.
Okay.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Vincent, second by Mr. Rully. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We are adjourned.